Let's go ahead and get started. Could we have roll call?
Councilmember Haper.
Here.
Hope.
Here.
Barbaris.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Chipman.
Here.
Okay. This is a public hearing to talk about proposed grant activities for community development block grant for park improvements at Memorial Park. And this project has morphed over time. It originally started with me talking with, trying to get a mayor's youth advisory council started and asking high school students what they wanted to see in town. And one of the things that they talked about was improving our parks for kids to have things to do. And also, one of the things they wanted to see was sidewalk from the high school to Memorial Park, since Memorial Park is used for a lot of the activities. Well, we got a grant for the sidewalk. It may not go as far as what we wanted, but the only reason why it's not being installed right now or have already been installed is because we were unable to find contractors who had the time to do it so far, but we're still working on that. There were other, there were suggestions for the park that included having inflatable movie screens so that there could be movies in the park on Friday evenings, things like ping pong and cornhole. And then last fall, to help kind of start things along, I went to the Blue Cross's Community Health Academy. And at the end of the academy, they gave each of the participants a $20,000 grant to be used for something health-related and using it in the parks fit that bill. They also had a grant available for people who had gone through the Health Academy. There were two grants of 185,000 this spring. We didn't get one of those grants, but because we had started the way that we did, going to the high school and getting input from kids, they gave us $10,000, just as kind of a bonus prize. So we had $30,000. Then also, in the spring, when we had the World
World Summit.
World Success Summit here at the Bendo. Adina from Region Five Development had made some remark about grants for park equipment. And so the two of us got together at that time and began talking. And there's money available for using in the parks. I originally wanted to see a walkway around the park. I wanted to see the cornhole and the ping pong and that sort of thing. But in looking at things, what we realized was that the playground equipment there is pretty much at the end of its useful life. We've been having to replace pieces and parts of it, and they're pretty spendy for the pieces and parts. But also, and so we were looking at just replacing parts, but it turns out that the bones themselves have taken some wear and tear, so they need to be replaced. That kind of took precedent over the other parts of the project that we wanted to do. And so, since that playground equipment probably gets more activity than any other part. And so, that's what we're addressing. We have a bit that we'll be talking about later on, but this part is just for public input on the pros and cons. As far as, are there any questions or comments?
Is there a timeframe that's associated with it that we need to, that it comes forward?
Yes.
I can cover them.
Yes.
Do you want me to get up and talk about the program?
Yes, please.
Because I have that in place, though. And the funds actually come down from PET. So because it's tied to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, there are some different strings attached to the funds that sometimes don't seem like they're related, but they are. Commerce gets about $7.5 to $8 million annually for these different loan programs or grant programs. To be eligible, you have to be a city or a county, and you have to also be from a low to moderate income area. And the grants themselves have to resolve a health or safety issue. The different types of, the categories of the grants are public facilities, so water, wastewater systems, fire stations, EMS buildings, those can all be giant projects. And those grants can come up to 500,000, can be awarded the maximums 500,000. And that really comes in handy for a lot of areas because nobody likes to bond and everybody is always struggling to find the money to do projects like that. Those grant applications come around every November. Senior centers and community centers, those are up to $245,000, and those happen in the spring. And we've done lots of those types of grant applications. Economic development, so this is tied to job creation, and if you have, if you're trying to lure a company or you even have identified a company that's actually going to create new jobs in the area, a lot of times we can come in and help with infrastructure. Those are typically around $400,000 grants. Imminent threats, I have one of those right now that I'm administering in Oakley. Their, one of their wells went dry. So those are a little lower, I think that one's 100,000 for that one. Then there's public parks, and public parks is the newest type of grant that is offered through this program. Typically, those are up to 245,000, and they like to see, they love playgrounds, making the parks more accessible for ADA, anybody that needs assistance, sidewalks, stuff like that. They love to do those types of projects. And this one is a little bit different. We started this whole process and the mayor and I worked, you know, I told him all of the parameters and stuff, and then they changed the type of grant on us this year. And that is because they had a bunch of CARES money. Do you guys remember CARES? It's tied to that awful word, COVID. But there was funds available, and so they rolled this out. The program, normally parks are 245,000. This time, this round, they're up to 250,000. So on this one, also, there's no match required, which isn't normal because these are usually really competitive. All of these types of grants are competitive. So with that being said, they rolled this out, they're really excited to reach areas that they haven't been in before, and this is one of them. So when I said Weezer, they got it really excited, and I was like, yes, we're going to do a project. The applications are reviewed annually. These are due September 22nd. There's 1,000 points possible, so they still will score all of these grant applications. Sometimes they get set aside, they don't get moved on. There's kind of an initial round, and then they go to what's called the EAC Committee, the Economic Advisory Council, and they look at those as well. The point breakdown, there's 1,000 points possible. The park assessment conditions and resiliency is 400 points. Project implementation, 250 points. That's how we say we're going to get this project done. The benefits is 150 points. Project match is zero points, as I said before, which is not normal. And then the Economic Advisory Council, and those are governor-appointed individuals that will come in with another 200 points possible for their scoring portion of it. There are strings attached to the funds. Davis Bacon is required on the construction part of it. If you are awarded, then I will complete an environmental assessment of the park, which is just a lot of paperwork, but we'll jump through those tubes. And then there's fair housing requirements as well, which we will be addressing tonight. I'm just going to read what the, since this round of park grants is a little different, I'll just read what Commerce says it is all about. So it's called Public Parks for Resiliency, Idaho Department of Commerce's Community Development Block Grant. Coronavirus, aid relief, and economic security is what CARES means. Public Parks for Resiliency projects must improve, expand, or create outdoor recreation opportunities that will help the community increase their long-term resiliency and ability to mitigate future coronavirus outbreaks. The project area will be required to meet the low to moderate income area-wide benefit, a national objective. So I told you before, it's 250,000. Priority will be given to existing parks, and the funding will be focused on improving park facilities which consist of playgrounds, including equipment, ADA accessibility, and within the park, park courts, pathways, and ADA-accessible restrooms. These applications were due between August 21st and September 22nd. So next Friday is the deadline, deadline. Funding announcements will be made mid-May, I mean mid-November, sorry, didn't panic yet. And these projects have to be completed by December 2025, which is a really good span of time for a park project. If it was water, it would be much different, but I'm confident we can get that done. This is a typical park application. This is the one I did last year for Hanson. You can see we have to provide a lot of information, so I apologize for the headaches that I'm causing, but we do provide them a lot of information to show that it's really a necessary project and that we're confident that it can be completed in a timely manner. I have a quasi-budget that I can share with you.
Why don't we hold that?
Uh-huh.
Why don't we hold that?
Oh, okay.
For the city council, the portion of it?
It's not for sure, for sure. I'm still waiting on information. We're going to include the demolition. We looked at the whole cost of the project, and that will include the demolition and hallway of that big structure that you have. So we can add that. We don't need match, but we should show it because you guys are doing a lot of work, and it just shows that you are really behind the project and that you are going to be there along the way. I think that's everything. Does anybody have any questions? I'm sure I missed something. I always think of something on my way home.
So you talked about the points that the Economic Council gives. What is, is that at their discretion, how they award those points, or are there some guidelines for those?
I think, I believe that Commerce gives them guidelines of things to look at. There's all different categories, and sometimes I listen to their meetings, and sometimes the advisory council, they'll be concerned, like, for instance, we had somebody that wanted in a fire station, a city, but they didn't know where it was going. That's part of the planning that should be in the grant application, so they were concerned about that. And they, they were trying, they're waffling whether to table it for now, which means they have to wait a whole year to reapply. Concerns like that come up, and they have discussions, but they can weight them, you know, heavier if they really like them and they think it'll really make a change and improvement, or if they really feel like it's not necessary. So I will find out who is in your region that's on the council and make sure that they get the application when we turn it in. So that gives them a month or so, probably before Commerce would even send it to them.
So the project that we're focusing on then would be the existing playground in Memorial Park. And I do, I know the budget's not firm, but it would help me in decision-making also to know, you've said there's 250,000?
Yes.
And so approximately, what does replacing the playground equipment, like, how much of that does it use, approximately?
Um, let me explain the process.
Okay.
So, once you guys are approved, you're, you've cleared your environmental, then we will go ahead and send out, prepare an RFP, and we will send that out. This is going to be over 150,000. So we're going to follow state guidelines, and we're going to, or state procedures, not guidelines, to make sure that we get that posted in the newspaper. It's out there so that you can have different companies come and prepare a proposal. The one I did for Hanson had, I think, six different criteria. We weren't looking at just the cheapest. We were looking at the type of equipment that they were bringing in. Does it follow all of the standards and meet all of the safety standards? There's different elements like that. So you guys, when you get those packages, you can decide what company to go through. Then you choose what equipment you want. So if you don't want to go over, you're going to have $225,000 if you're fully awarded for construction. 25,000 is going to go to administration. So you'll have that 225,000 plus the 30,000 available if we need to use it on the play equipment. But you guys, after the RFP, after you choose the company, you will work with the company to get what you want.
Okay.
So if you want to scale down, not a problem. We, I think we are constrained by the footprint is all. So you guys will decide what you want. If you don't want one megastructure, maybe you'll have two different structures, but you'll have the opportunity. What we're doing right now is just getting a cost estimate, because I have to show that you need the full amount of the grant. So, and that probably will take the full amount, but we can keep it down.
That was my question, is with what we have, is that going to utilize that large of a funding amount?
Plus the Blue Cross grants, plus a little bit of city cash.
Wow.
Not, not much, under 3,000, so. But you guys can make adjustments.
So the environmental study that you talked about is, so I'm familiar with, with like a commercial real estate transaction where environmental studies are sometimes required. Is, is the, is that what we're talking about here?
No. Everything is pretty much a desktop-type environmental. I do searches and make sure there's no red flags. If there were red flags, then we might have to go a little deeper. But unless you know something about that park that is concerning, I don't anticipate having any issues. We have to go through, there's a whole process that Commerce has as guidelines that we go through, and we have to answer. They're called green sheets, so it's different areas. How close are they to the airport is, you know, isn't always a factor in this project, no, just different, things like that. Is it in a flood zone?
So you're talking about an internal process at your department primarily?
Yeah. And that's part of the administration fee for the grant.
Sometimes we have more mosquitoes than what we'd like.
Absolutely. I agree, not necessarily here, but in Idaho.
Well, yeah, that's good, because those things.
They can get spendy, they can.
Really spendy.
Yeah. So you guys have to have a certified grant administrator, and they have to be certified through the CDBG program. And we have, I believe, five people on staff that have that designation. And we administer lots and lots of these projects, so we try to get it done.
Well, let's go ahead and move on to the comment portion of the meeting. And so, with that being said, are there any affirmative comments in regards to this Hearing done. Are there any neutral comments in regards to this project? Christina?
Very neutral, then. Christina Stanley, 440 West Idaho. I do have a question because I, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm hearing this massive play structure will take the grant plus some. I hear a lot in the community about not enough to, for the teens to do, and you brought that up with the ping pong tables and the cornholes, and I know like the concrete cornhole setups are about $2,500, the ping pongs are about 5,000 through Stone Age in Oregon, and I don't know if anybody around here does that as well. Is there any way to scale down the playground portion of it so we can give the teens and the older kids something to play with? Because we already have a playground structure at City Park, and we really don't have a lot for the teens. And that's my only concern, that it's all focused on the littles, and those littles grow up, and they don't have anything to do, and they cause problems. So that's what I would like to see happen otherwise. And you would also mention the ADA accessible restrooms. Is that a requirement?
No, that's just one thing that they will fund.
One thing that they will fund. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other neutral comments? Are there any negative comments? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. We'll go ahead and get started with our meeting. Okay, could we have roll call?
Councilmember Haper.
Here.
Hope.
Here.
Barbaris.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Chipman.
Here.
Okay. Tonight, Reverend Hunter Meiser is here to give the indication, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Mark Teller. Let's ready to go. Father, we pause when we think about 9/11 and the significance that means to us as a country, and we're reminded that there is evil in the world, and yet you also put within us a resilient spirit to carry on. Lord, we pause right now, and we ask that you give our leaders tonight wisdom and guidance. We thank you for the city of Weezer and for the good things that are happening within it. Lord, we pray that you would just continue to keep your hand on us, we pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any commission reports? Are there any committee reports?
Yes, I have a report. Clarification, anything on our planning and zoning historic airport are listed as commission? So he and I had this conversation, is this a committee or a commission? Just for educational purposes, probably my report should have been a commission report. Committee are when we meet as council members on city issues, so that should give you some clarification.
I'll still give you.
Will you still give me?
Yes.
For the public as well, I would share that. Yeah, I had the opportunity to attend the Weezer Architectural Preservation Commission and Committee meeting. Just a couple of things I'd like to note for the council and the community. First and foremost, if you sit through a meeting and you listen to what they are doing for the city preservation, the depot, the buildings, the theater, it is amazing what they are doing as volunteers. They did get a $2,500 enhancement grant and have selected some amazing historical train depot brochure pictures and information, and they are going to use that to put a kiosk at the east end of the depot that will tell the history of our depot and what it was used for. Really amazing visuals. It was just, it was kind of a cool thing to see. They have assigned not only an outdoor but an indoor manager of the depot now that will kind of take care of anything that's broken. They are seeing a lot of rental use of the depot lately. They are looking at ways to mitigate some of the weeds and things out there. But what I'd like to bring to the community is they had, Walgreens brought them two dump truckloads of dirt that they have put over by the caboose, and they are doing a native plant scape, and they have contoured it through the help of Diane Christensen and Tim Smedley, and they need eight or nine railroad ties. So if you know anybody that's got some railroad ties they're not using and would be willing to donate them to this project, it is going to be an amazing. They've got all of the native landscape from the area and stuff, and they're putting in an irrigation system and stuff. If you have railroad ties, there'll be a marked area outside of, right at the, where the caboose is sitting, and you can just dump them there, and they would be grateful. So just something, if you know someone. And then lastly, they are also looking at our greenscape and construction and things that affect how our community looks in the long term. And the courthouse is doing an addition, and so I would like to share with the public and the council that if you have some thoughts about what they are doing there, the plan for the commissioners at this point is to take out all of the grass on the west end of the courthouse and make a parking lot. If you have any feelings about that, please address those to the commissioners so that a decision, they know the community's got some thoughts about it too, whether you're for or against. The Architectural Preservation Committee just asks for some input to help them with decision whether to take that grass out. And on that note, I just want to say, if you have any interest in the history and helping to preserve a lot of this stuff, what they are doing exceeds, they're doing cemetery locations all over the county to listen to what they found for cemeteries. You guys have no idea. I would encourage our newspaper to go and speak to them. They have found hidden cemeteries. They have found people come forward with cemeteries with one or two family members in it all over the county. So it's, it's just pretty incredible to be a part of. So I hope that we will have an active council member engaged in attending those meetings in the future. So that's my report.
Thank you.
So the library report. This month, again, an active and busy month in the library. 2,980 books were checked out to the month of August with 3,400-plus patrons going through the doors. November 3rd and 4th is their art and craft show. It is totally booked out. All the booths have been selected. We're very excited. It'll be a great craft show, so put that on your calendar. The library meeting room, which is rented or actually just used for free, was used 30 out of 31 days. So it is a very busy place, and we're excited to see other things also open up to help alleviate some of those needs. Some days, there were three to four groups using it in one day, which is great. As far as kids, STEM program for six and up is starting again. The local churches are, have galleyed togeth, galleyed.
It's a kitchen.
I haven't had dinner, sorry. Have rallied together to provide food for the students that are signed up for the STEM program on the Fridays when there's no school. And each of the churches have kind of divvied up, and they're taking two weekends, twice a semester is what I'm going to call it. And so, if you know of students that are looking for something to do on Friday when there's no school, we encourage you to sign up. There was plenty of space this last week, and there's still some space for the upcoming week for students to participate in that. It is free for the public. They just have to sign up and reserve so that they know how many to expect. TBS is going to do a storytime. They're very excited for that. They've got some great storytellers coming out, so make sure you check out the libraries. You've got little ones to go over there. And... And then November 30th is going to be their open house, Christmas open house in the library with several vendors that will be there, as well as October 9th is Columbus Day, and they will be open for that day. They were closed for one of the others, but they'll be open for Columbus Day. I think I got everything at the library at the moment.
I have a question for the library.
Yes.
Do you have any idea how much they made on their fundraiser?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, that's on the other side of the page. Sorry, let me report back on that. So Friends of the Library joined, and if you remember, there was a chair fundraiser that we did last week that we announced or last month. They raised $9,000.
Holy smokes.
For the auction of those chairs. It was quite awesome to see just how many people turned up and would auction and then turn around and donate to be re-auctioned. It was fantastic.
That's awesome.
And so wonderful to see, a great success for them. They have used that money to buy new furniture for the library, and so there's some new shelving coming in, there's some new seating, is that right, Mark?
Table and chairs.
Table and chairs, yeah, just several new pieces.
Storage cabinet for the.
For the STEM program that they use on the Fridays, yeah. So they're just, they're excited to invest it back in the library. So awesome, awesome things happening there. I'm also part of the design committee, review committee. We haven't met terribly often lately because we've been waiting for some paperwork to come back. As a reminder, the design committee is the committee that has come together to put together the design requirements or guidelines that as a city we're looking for, so that when a development plan comes in, we have paperwork for them that says, sure, here's our guidelines so that it looks like it's a part of Weezer City. We're meeting again tomorrow, and we will review some of the paperwork that has come back from the lawyers finally. We're excited for that. And then there's a couple of things on our plate that we'll review. So we are busy working away.
Thank you. Any other committee or commission reports? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to department reports. Natasha?
City of Weezer, oops. Okay, this is your monthly reports. So city Weezer personnel, we have 48 full-time employees, four part-time, and two seasonal. Weezer Police Department reports, that should say August of 2023. We had 15 adult arrests, 10 misdemeanor, and five felony. We had two juvenile arrests, with both of them being misdemeanor. We had 37 citations, eight misdemeanor, 29 infractions. We had case reports of 30, five felony, misdemeanor 12, accident six, and incident seven. We had 22 dog complaints, there were five impounded, eight returned to owners, 19 cat complaints, six impounded, transferred out were four. We had four wildlife complaints, one livestock. Ordinance called, we had one parking, 11 abandoned vehicles, one traffic hazard, 14 weed, four junk and debris, one cat hamper occupancy, warnings 15, and van inspections five. The electric department, power consumption for 2022, July 2022, was 5,648,491 kilowatts. July of 2023, 5,406,505 kilowatts. Their project this month, projects this month, they installed over 3,200 feet of conduit for Sundance subdivision, worked on transferring overhead conductors to underground for Tredary Farms. They picked up that truck in Denver, and they installed overhead service for a machine shop on East Fourth. Water, wastewater treatment plant, August flow for 2022 was 38,490,000. August flow for 2023 was 38,230,000. August BOD for 2022 was 38,847 pounds. August BODs for 2023 were 28,415 pounds. They hauled 71 tons of solids to Clay Peak, took clarifiers down for cleaning, and jetted 8,000 feet of sewer main on north side of town. The water department, water production for August 2022 was 37.17 million gallons. August for 2023 was 30.28 million gallons. They have started their annual valve exercising program. They read all electric and water meters. They helped divers with annual intake maintenance, repaired water leak at Commercial and Second, prepped for asphalt, asphalt, sorry, and started reservoir one rehab. The street department ran the sweeper for 13 days, relocated fence and gate at the airport, sprayed weeds in streets and alleys, graded alleys, ran six loads of asphalt with patchbacks and potholes, and they set the football goalposts and sprayed for mosquitoes. The Weezer Rec Department, their coed softball is complete with a successful season. They hope for more teams next year, two teams for the fifth and sixth grade football, and then they have three teams for the third and fourth grade football. They are currently taking registration for men's basketball, and the swimming pool is closed for the season. Building Department, they have four building permits issued, zero single families, zero garages, one patio, carport, zero accessory buildings, one dwelling alteration in addition, 11 consults, 22 inspections. Mayor and City Council, that is your August monthly reports for the city of Weezer.
Council has had a chance to look at the minutes for the last meeting, last two meetings.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the city council meetings from August 14th, regular meeting and special council meeting on August 28th, and have them placed on file.
Second.
So they moved in second and all in paper?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. And since there's no unfinished, oh, the bills.
The finance committee.
Yeah, I guess.
So kind of reviewed your bills for this last month. Did we have more than one review? Okay. So we just kind of did them independently, I guess. So anyway, I would like to make a motion at this point in time to approve the bills as were presented to the finance committee and recommend approval by the council.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, seconded. Do we have a roll call?
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Barbaris.
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hafer?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And since there's no unfinished business, we'll now move on to new business with Resolution 601, or 681 for the bendome rental increase approved by mayor's assignment. We discussed earlier in the public hearing portion of the fee increase, and would there be any questions regarding that?
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 681 regarding bendome fees, rental fees.
Second.
And authorize the mayor's final.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded.
I'll second that part, too.
Okay, good. Been moved and seconded and seconded. So could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Hafer?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Barbaris?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item is related to it and involves approval of a revised bendome rental agreement. And Keith Gervold had a chance to look at this. This is a condensation of a document that was pretty lengthy before, and mainly with Ms. Hafer, Councilwoman Hafer, and Johnna from the Rec Department, it's been greatly reduced. And so are there any questions in regards to the new rental agreement?
I've got one if I can find it, Mayor. Okay. Question I had when I was out of order before. I think it's on the fifth page, you have some kitchen duties for caterers and private parties. Okay, all food must be prepared in the presence of a certified food handler or purchased from a grocery store. So I'm wondering, I guess it just ran through my mind, does that mean that, that I can't get something that's prepared by, by someone and bring it in? Or is this, are we just talking about the food that's, that's prepared on-site?
I can.
Thank you.
I'm happy to educate you using my professional expertise here. So Southwest Health District requires a food handler's permit, and not even that, just a certified food handler who has a food management license with them. And that, that is required for you to be able to make food for the, for the masses on a premises, because I'm, my understanding is that Bendom doesn't have that person. That means you have to supply your own and be able to show that certification. If you are unable to show that certification, then any food that is being served to the public in a group or setting has to be prepared in a certified kitchen where there is a certified food handler. So that's why the stipulation would be that you either have someone who is certified and is there prepping the food, or you have purchased it from another facility that is inspected and clean and graded and is managed by someone that holds that license.
Okay, because that was my concern, was that, you know, a caterer prepares it off-site.
Caterers would hopefully have their own certification, but if it's just mom, pa who's doing this, I've cooked for 30, that's not going to meet the certification.
So the way it's there here covers, covers that, the caterer who is, who is certified. You know, I was thinking about if, like Patrick made something and brought it down there, is, I would think, in my opinion, we'd want that to be okay.
He's a certified food handler.
His kitchen is certified, and he is certified, so that would be fine.
Okay. So how do we, how do we monitor someone that is prepared off-site? How do we monitor that?
The Southwest District Health came through and, and just did a random inspection. They could face fines for that. It's up to the people that are renting it. But I know where, I, we have funerals in there where people bring in the food, but we are not, if we are cooking the food in the kitchen, it's the food preparation that is being looked at. So, so everybody brought in food and it wasn't, and it was pot left, which happens all the time, it does not have to go through, it's not in our kitchen, it's not being prepped in our kitchen. If it's being prepared in our kitchen, this is what we require to protect the public.
There's specific apartments for chemicals that are allowed to be used, how long it's been cooled for, so, because that's a commercial kitchen, that you have to have someone licensed to use.
So this just restates what the Southwest District Health is going to require anyway? So I should not be concerned about it?
You should be relieved it's in there.
Okay. Thank you.
If I would make, I'd like to make a suggestion. This is, although it's a condensed application, I do think page numbers would be beneficial. Top right corner somewhere, I don't know, the page numbers so that you can easily identify, oh, I'm missing page five of this application and things like that.
And do? And just so people know that when it was condensed, it wasn't that we got rid of a bunch of things, it's just that there was so much duplication. It was here, and then it was again here, and again here, and then the catering, the kitchen stuff, that one page is actually blown up and posted in the kitchen so that anybody that uses the kitchen has this to look at, they don't have to have this piece of paper with them. It's actually up there and instructs them what they need to do. So we didn't feel like it needed to be redundant over and over in the contract. So that's what helped alleviate a lot of the size.
And then just for information only, another reason why we redid it, not only to condense it and simplify it, was that the agreement before was technically with the chamber, not with the city. This is now 100% with the city, the chamber is removed, and so this is the contract or lease agreement that would be between the renter and the city. So before now, we've been running under the chamber, chambers agreement.
Another question? To me, when I read this, it still sounds like people, it would seem to me that it maybe should say all food that is prepared in the kitchen, which should be in the presence of, presence of a certified food handler, because to me, if I just read this, I would think that, you know, when we have little Mr. Jones's funeral, that you can't bring in food, or like when the Red Cross comes and does the blood drive and the gals make the food and bring it in. I'm just wondering, that, it just seems to me that our intent is to say that the food that is prepared in the kitchen is in the presence of a certified food handler or purchased from a grocery store. Is that, am I the only one that thinks that's?
I know we, I know we ran this by an attorney to make sure.
100%.
That we met the legalities of it, but that I would have no objections if we could just elaborate on what that includes, and maybe could you reach back out to the attorney and just say, we just want a clarification, how do we word this?
Absolutely.
To protect us? And my recommendation is with the guidance of the attorney, I would recommend that we approve the bendome with that addition for the future. Would you feel okay with that, Marty?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Yes, we read that just all food must be prepared, all food in the kitchen must be prepared.
That is prepared.
In the presence of a cert, just a couple words.
Just say that is prepared, all food that is prepared in the kitchen, is that what we're trying to say here? Must be in the presence of a.
Yeah, all food prepared.
Well, my clarification is prepared versus cooked, because preparing could be, I'm just taking it out of the packaging and putting it out as opposed to utilizing the stove and kitchen.
Prepared, I think, is cooked, is made, that's made there. This is my, what I give, would you say prepared?
We'll, we'll make sure legally.
Just give some clarification, so we only have to do it once.
Lawyers will tell you how.
Good point.
Okay.
Thank you.
And on that note, I made a motion, and Marty seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next is approval of the Community Development Block Grant Plan in the amount not to exceed 250,000, and approve the mayor to, to sign. And we have Adina Jenkins from Region 5 Development here to talk about this.
So I believe number three on the agenda refers to the Citizen Participation Plan, and that is just adopting this plan. So we're having our first public hearing, this one is required before we submit an application. We posted it in the newspaper, made sure the public was aware that we were having this meeting. If you are awarded, and when we get into the project, when it's 50% or more complete, we will have a second public hearing. We'll discuss how the project's going, the budget, when we anticipate being completed, and all of the items that we've achieved along the way. So this, that's just this first one.
And to clarify, this is for Memorial Park, not City Park.
Correct.
That we're looking at, and the playground equipment there is, is what this is kind of adjusted its focus on.
Right. I tried to take a look, we got prices for City Park and also for the soccer complex. Had to scale it back.
And, and so the sidewalk is, we're just not pursuing that because we couldn't find a contractor, is that correct? And so we're redirecting those funds from the grant?
No, 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 no. We already. No, 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 no. We already have the funds for that.
Okay.
It's a matter of finding a contractor.
The contractor, okay.
Yeah, right. No, that's, that's a separate...
Separate deal, that's what I thought.
The Vindham Pathway Project may have to go back to bid in November, sounded like if we don't get any interest in it this time, we'll go back to public.
Mayor, then I would make a motion that we approve the Community Development Block Grant Plan in the amount not to exceed $250,000, and approve the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Blackwell?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Hayford?
Yes.
Barbaris?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
And as part of this grant application, and something that we need to do anyway, I would like to propose that the Fair Housing Resolution Number 682 be approved and authorize the mayor to sign.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve Fair Housing Resolution 682 and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, could we, we don't need to...
So, I'm sorry, just to put it right, on the written one, it says 683.
No, no, it's the little one, it's the big one. So if you look in there...
Just look at the wrong one?
Yeah, so go back one.
Okay, I just want to make sure, okay, on the right track here.
Sounds good. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and then also Resolution 683 for, to submit the grant materials and approve the mayor to sign.
Mr. Mayor, I, motion that we approve Resolution 683 for the, excuse me, for mayor to sign and submit grant materials.
I'll second.
Motion?
Been moved and seconded, all in, no, we better have a roll call on this one.
Councilmember Chipman?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Barbaris?
Yes.
Hayford?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And last but not least, the grant would require that the city hire an administrator. I would recommend that we go with Region Five Development, since they...
Region Four.
Region Four, I'm sorry, Region Four Development, since they're putting the grant together and they're very familiar with it, and so would there be a motion to authorize Region Four Development to administer the CBD grant?
Mayor, I would authorize that, but I'd also like to mention that it is, because it is required to be a certified block grant administrator. So I would make a motion to authorize Region Four to serve as our certified block grant administrator.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, could we have a roll call, please? And no fighting over this.
Councilmember Hayford?
Yes.
Councilmember Chipman?
Yes.
Barbaris?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you, Adina, for all the hard work you've done so far.
She needed me for anything else?
Don't.
Okay, I'm gonna...
She has a long drive back.
One point, boys.
Oh, boy.
It's long enough.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Okay, speaking of work, the next item is to approve new personnel policies, and they include driving or operating a city vehicle, code of ethics and conduct, equal opportunity employer, whistleblower, non-retaliation, workplace free from harassment and discrimination, responding to pressing orders and social media, and drug and alcohol-free workplace. So you might have assumed that our HR administrator and our local HR person have been very busy the last few months, making revisions to our personnel policies, and you have that information before you, and are there any questions?
Mine is not a question, but I would like to have Natasha share with us the process that you went through, so that the council knows, like, where all this has been before it landed with us.
Absolutely. So in going through the current Personnel Policy Manual, again, kind of like the Vindham, the rental agreement, it was very complicated, very, it was just all over the place, it contradicted itself, it overlapped itself, everything was all over. So what we're trying to really do is if it's a policy, it's a policy, we are going to make policy, and that is separate from the employee handbook. The employee handbook is going to be just that, and that's a handbook for employees. If somebody from the public, the council, employees want to know the policies on anything, they can say, I would like a policy on this, and you can say, here is the policy. It's kind of separate the two. And a lot of these policies were not, they were mentioned in the handbook, but they were not set in place as a policy adopted by the council and followed by the city, city we know. So this is just to give some absolute clarification on the policies, different from just this employee handbook. So there will be, yes, yes, so, kind of the process we went through to bring these policies to light is we had our, an external HR person kind of draft them up, and then what we did is I reviewed them and I edited them as HR, from my point of view, and what I got out of them, and what my understanding of them, and then we had another employee read it as an employee, and how did they, you know, interpret it and fill it, how did they understand it? And then we had the mayor review it as well, and then you guys have read it as well. So we have really tried to get all aspects of it, to make sure it is understandable. There's, it would be, so it has been reviewed, reviewed, rereviewed, and so now we bring forth to you.
So Natasha, did we have any legal eyes on this at all?
Our legal went is on our outsourced HR. She has the authority and legal...
Knowledge.
Yes, 100%.
I've got a few questions, or comments to make. I don't know how to, I guess the first one is in general, most, all of the policies refer in the first paragraph to who all of these policies apply to, employees, contractors, vendors, elected officials, the city council, and representatives of the city. But as a general rule, the actual policies refer to only employees. So although, although those other people, well, including us, who these policies apply for, I'm not sure it is clear enough what the other folks' responsibilities are, or I would like to, to at least take a minute and think about that. All the guidelines and procedures primarily are talking about the employees and supervisors, and what, you know, what needs to happen. It does not specifically refer to any of the other people who are bound by these policies, such as...
Example?
Like, well, what I'm saying is, is it doesn't, it says it refers, or it applies to the city council, but no one in here does it say what, you know, what that means, what, you know, what are the...
What are the consequences?
What are the consequences, what are the responsibilities? Or a contractor, or a vendor, so I guess I'm just...
Give us one as an example, I'm not quite sure which, like, what one.
Okay, so, well, let's just look at, at, what I have up here is the whistleblower. Says this policy applies to all employees, contractors, vendors, elected officials, the city council, and representatives of the city. However, in the, in the rest of that policy, it does not, it refers to, first of the city, it refers to employees, it does not, so what applies to those other people, what are, it says that the policy applies to them, but how do they know what, you know, what their, what the restrictions are, what the, you know, what their responsibilities are? Doesn't really say, so an example is pretty much the whole thing.
Well, I think that even a vendor, if he saw something that needed to be brought out of the open, could be a whistleblower.
So as a vendor, he could come to the human resource representative and/or the mayor and voice that concern.
Can I terminate them on that whistleblower status?
And so just, just for information, that top portion is on every single policy, it is a general statement, it does not mean that everything about that general statement is going to directly be reflected in that policy. That is just put on every single policy.
And so Larry, do you see it being more effective to have a vendor policy, that all of the things that outline for a vendor, and then all of the policies that would apply to city councilors, and...
I guess I'm just not clear what having those other people included in there means when, when they're not referred to again in the, in the policy itself.
So I'm going to use this as a, do you mind? So, so an example I was thinking is the use of the city car. So it gives all the guidelines that, will those apply to us if we were to use the city car?
Exactly.
So do you, do you have to take that out and make it specific to us, to know that these apply to us? Or do you put us all in that, because it applies to anybody who uses the city car? So I'm, I'm trying to see the benefit of pulling individual vendors out, or is there any one of those that are listed that you feel more uncomfortable than?
No, it's just, this is just a general statement that, a vendor, for instance, it says that, you know, number one, do any vendor that we have to, do we have to then give them a copy of our policy, since it applies to them?
I can see that as a question.
So from my understanding, a policy is something that can be made available, I would have to reach out and ask for clarification on that.
Okay, anyway, that was just my observation.
Yeah, I would agree with you on that, is if it's a policy and they need to be following all these rules, do we have to provide that when they're hired?
Right.
As a contractor or vendor?
And, and we can certainly do that.
And I didn't know whether, you know, I'm assuming that, you know, our HR person, that that's just a boilerplate type, you know, sentence in there, but I just want to understand.
So, Mayor, on the, like, the car we use for, you know, training car and all that stuff, if we take that to a mechanic and they have to drive that car to another shop, I would expect them to drive it per our policy.
Oh, that's a good one.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's kind of what that all ties back together. It covers us in the background, where we're hiring somebody to rehab Reservoir One, those guys are up there doing things that we would not agree with, that would be under our policy to terminate our contract with them, if they do ask that.
Okay.
It is good to have it in there just in case.
Okay, all right.
And just on that note, this is where we're really trying to have policy in place and take that away from the city employee handbook, because as of right now, we just have a personnel policy that kind of touches on all these, and that's why we're really trying to make, separate policy from handbook.
Perfect, okay, I get that.
So I have a question about that. So did any, did the policies themselves change from, or did we create new policies because there weren't any?
So just as an example, the drug and alcohol-free workplace, that was very all over the place. I mean, in our hand, policy handbook, it just went, you know, pre-employment, in an accident, in a this, there was no, this is what it is. So me as an employee could read that very, in very different ways, and so we just pulled all that information out, made a policy. We did not have a non-retaliation, we did not have a whistleblower, so those, yes, those are policies that we have, would like to adopt.
You know, correct me if I'm wrong, but like, on the drug and alcohol, we betted that with the police department, too, before we, before we brought it forward.
Okay, sorry.
No, go ahead. So, speaking of the whistleblower policy, the only concern I have with that is, is there, doesn't appear to be a mechanism for whistleblowers to go outside of City Hall to, to voice their concerns, whether that, you know, in a commercial business, I'm used to having access as an employee to, if I think something's wrong, to be able to communicate directly with, in my case, board of directors. And so I'm wondering if, if we need something like that, the, our policy here stated, says that those things should be reported to the city clerk or the mayor. So I'm wondering if, if we should consider having another, another way to report those or to...
An additional avenue?
Right.
I have a question. Go ahead. Because this, in my years of being here, if an employee got, they did not get any results from the mayor or the clerk, they could bring in an executive session to the council as the next level of concern. Do we have that in their employee, in the manual, or where is that addressed?
It is going to be in the manual. My concern with putting it on our policy is we want the employees and everybody to follow, go to the human resource representative and/or the mayor, before they just take everything to the council in executive session and/or the city attorney. We wouldn't want minor things that could be handled at a city level, you know, the resource, human resource representative or the mayor, if it can be handled at that level, we wouldn't want every little thing to be just straight gone to city council in executive session and/or the city attorney.
Agreed, okay.
Do we line that out in steps for them, to know what...
I would think we would do that in the handbook.
Okay.
Of how an employee could go about getting...
Okay.
Different.
And see, I understand that you, that, you know, most things are, could be handled at the, at the, you know, at the level that it says here, and frankly, I don't care if it's in the policy or in the handbook, or that the other avenue exists. I think it's a mistake to make that decision for our employees. I think they, if, if someone has a problem, they need to have the ability to make the decision of where it should go. And then if we, in executive session, think it can be handled, you know, if they're, if they're coming, you know, directly to us, or if it's someone else, you know, we can handle it there, but, but I don't... someone else, you know, we can handle it there, but, but I don't think we need, I guess this is just my opinion, I don't think we should make that decision for them, that, that they ought to have all avenues available to them, and they make a decision of where it goes.
Do you, do you want it?
Mike.
Oh. Do, thank you. Do you want things to go to executive session first, and a special executive session called before it goes to the mayor or the human resources, if it could be resolved at that level?
Again, I, I think it's the whistleblower that should be making that decision. I mean, that's just my, that's my opinion.
Say you've got a problem, it's a problem for me, say I was chewed out for whatever, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna run to the, the city council, we're gonna get this over with. I think you should have steps you follow, keep everything organized, you can, you can say, alright, keep one here first, he was told wasn't right, we'll wait here second, I think we're the last resort, that's why we have these other people, and you're not gonna have somebody in there once a week, I mean, we got good employees, we got stuff, it's something that's gonna happen rarely, that I think it should be resolved between the people they work for or with before it comes to us.
And what about it in the case that?
We do that all the time, we would.
Well, what I'm thinking about is the case that, where the problem is, in this case, the city clerk or the mayor. And they, and they're, you know, they could feel, feel like that, you know, that, you know, their job's in jeopardy, that, that, that they, you know, I just think that that other avenue, it should be available, and, and, you know, I, I don't know how to, how to say which ones can go, which issues can go straight to someone else.
I think, I think, you know, you'd fall in line with what we already have, in that you go to your supervisor first, if it can't be resolved with your supervisor, then you go to the mayor, well, you go to mainly public works is where most of it falls under, and if it isn't resolved there, even if you believe that the problem is, is with the mayor, you know, you still follow that, and by the way, nobody's ever gonna accuse me of anything.
Can I?
Yeah, just a second. So, in the policy, in the whistleblower policy itself, under whistleblowing reporting, in that second paragraph, it says Department of Labor, Government Complaint Whistleblower Resources, it, it, there's a guideline, it says that we would like you to go to your, your supervisor first, if that doesn't get resolved, you go to the human resource representative, city clerk to respond, if that does not get the resolution that you want, that you can go to the mayor, and then it states that for any, at no time the city suggests that employee should not contact the whistleblower, lowers.gov complaint page, but we do hope that employees give the city the chance to resolve at a city level. So it does give you other guidelines and other opportunities to take it above and beyond if you do not feel you got the resolution from the human resource representative or the city clerk or mayor, it, it does give you other avenues and other options, which I think is what you're trying to point out, is if it were to be with the human resource representative, city clerk, mayor, that somebody had other avenues to go, go to, and I think it, I think it states that in, in the policy itself.
So then they could go to the, this complaint page? And what does that tell them?
That, that's actually through the Department of Labor, I mean.
It gives them the instructions of what you can do to protect your job, who do you contact, what type of a situation, it gives you scenarios, and here's who you can reach out to, is what that does for a whistleblower page.
But if you have a problem with somebody, you start with doing the steps, say it is the mayor, you walk in there, I mean, two people can talk, walk in there, close door, and say, mayor, I got a problem with you, and I'll tell you what, you wouldn't believe how many things have been worked out by just talking, save yourselves a lawyer fee, save yourself a whole bunch of, of problems, but let them know what's, what's going on, you know, they got you digging the ditch for eight hours a day with no breaks, you know, then you can, but I'm using that as just an example, but I mean, talking to somebody, you can work out a lot of stuff, then if that doesn't work, move up the ladder.
I do think it's important for us to remember, policies and procedures are put into place as a, and honestly, it's an insurance policy, it protects the employee and it protects the employer, and so, you know, we might not get it perfect this first time, but it's much more important to have something in place so that we, I mean, in education, that's the first thing we do, we say, what's the policy? If you don't follow the policy, who's at fault then? You know, it's either the employee didn't follow the policy, or it's the employer, and I, I think it's pretty vital that we get these policies into place, there's several on here that are really good, and, and, but I totally understand and respect that, that worry of, of, you know, if, if your complaint is with the mayor or the HR, what, where do you go then? And so, maybe it is a matter of revisiting this particular one and looking at adding a paragraph, maybe, that says, in the event of the complaint being with the mayor or city clerk, recommend you go to city council, maybe a simple statement like that would help us resolve some of the, the worry and provide that additional avenue, but also still maintain what the, what you guys have done, which is pretty good work here.
Absolutely, I, like I said, that's my, my concern, is I want to make sure everybody has, has a, a different avenue, especially in the case where, where, you know, they're not comfortable, with, you know?
Not everyone's comfortable talking, yeah.
With these options, I, you know, I would, just one more comment, I would think it'd be a lot less intimidating to, to go to the city clerk or the mayor privately than, than to involve, you know, the six of us.
I would think so too, when you're upset.
And we, you know, I can't speak for future administrators, or, I can't speak for future administrators or administrations, but we work hard to create an atmosphere where people can come and talk. And so, we're working diligently at that.
Well, agreed, and I, I don't doubt, I mean, I, you know, these policies are, are in the, are for when something blows up.
Yeah.
That's, these are what you fall back on, so that, I mean, in the, as a general rule, I can't imagine that, that, you know, I'd be surprised if we ever had any, to be honest with you.
Sure.
But, but the policies are in place for, like I said, when.
The CY policy, CYB, sorry.
So anyway, I guess, I guess I've discussed that to death.
So, may I ask the question, are, do we have to approve all of these policies at once, or because they're individual policies that you've created, do we need to be approving these individually, like 200.211, which is the whistleblower policy?
As of right now, they are on the agenda as an action item in their entirety, I don't see why we couldn't.
Well, 'cause I want, I guess my question would be, are we able to move forward and approve all, save the whistleblower policy pending revisions by a lawyer to include concerns, like, is that something that we can do so we can move forward? Because I think all of them are pretty good, and, but I, I see, I see, I totally understand your point of view in wanting to have that, were there any other policies that you felt you needed to have that, something like that clarified?
We could go through every one of these and do that, I mean, somebody may not like this one, and the next one might like this one, I think we've got a, we're trying to set a precedent here and get something started, if we need to retweak it occasionally, but I think we just approve the whole thing, I mean, we could go on forever about somebody not happy with this one, and this one, and this one, and.
And every scenario, like, there are so many scenarios that we could be going, well, but what about this, and, but, I, I think what you're doing is, you're setting, the initial plan is to protect our employees and us, and you could, you could go right into a lot of details for every situation, and I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's gonna be any more helpful than just having a policy that says here, you can go to the whistleblower site, and common sense for employees, they're gonna seek out, if it's bad enough, they're gonna seek out.
I agree.
Some advice from an attorney or someone, I, I just hate to put so much in there that.
I think we're making it a two-two.
And any policy can be brought up, brought up for review at any time, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So if we pass the whole thing, and then we can, then revisit.
Bring one up for reconsideration.
Just approve these, hang a couple pair of blocks of gloves out in the hallway?
Keep it simple. Yes, right, you know, I, I get that, but, the fact of the matter is, is that when we approve these, we're gonna be done with them as a, as a city council, unless, and so, I think we need to know what we're approving and, and what we're comfortable with, and, yes, it's, it's a, it's a pain, and yes, it takes some time, but, and frankly, as I went through them, the issue that we already discussed was by far the, maybe most controversial, but, you know, I, I wanna know what, what I'm approving, and, because, again, we're, we're likely not gonna, not gonna see these again, so this is, this is, and, yeah, we might have to defend them.
So, I'm gonna make a recommendation here, since we've talked about this quite a bit, and I don't know if it can be resolved, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve the personnel policies as presented, driving, I'm not gonna list them all right now, and ask for a second, if it dies, for lack of a second, then we'll go back and revisit them, if the council members, we've got some that don't feel like they're complete, they can vote oppose approving them, my recommendation is, even if we do approve them, if you feel, Larry, that that one may still need an amendment to it, I'd say, go to Natasha and work on it, because we can always bring that policy back for an amendment, but I just hate to see us get so far down in the weeds tonight, when this has gone through so many people, including a professional HR person who does HR for cities, that's, I, I just feel like that's beyond us tonight, but I would like to offer that as an option so that we can move forward, so, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second your motion.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded, so we have a roll call.
Councilmember Barbaris.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Chipman.
Yes.
Heifer.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Hoag.
No.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Lee family subdivision number two, approving the final plat, and authorize the mayor to sign, and Mr. Mike?
This is the construction that's been going on over on East Six across from the Red Veins, it's three lots subdivision, as of date, they've installed all of the infrastructure that we've asked for, curved gutter sidewalk, road, water, sewer, and storm drainage, I would recommend that we approve this and authorize the mayor to sign pending their punch list of a few small things that they have to go in and make corrections on that we won't allow to go further until they've corrected, none of them are real major, it's usually just small things, we've done this on the Old Sperry, and most all subdivisions we do this, this way, I don't know if you had a chance to drive by it, but they, they opened the road back up, we did give the corrections to the engineer today, and they're gonna start working on those this week, and, this stuff will be sent over to engineering, our engineering will still have to do the finals on it, but I don't see any issues with it as of now, except for, like I said, they do have a small punch list to take care of before we do a final signature on it.
Are there any questions?
Yes, is, is this just, this whole subdivision just taking that, the Walgreens property?
No, this, I.
Is that the whole area out there?
So if you go down there, you can see where it's pinned to the end of the sidewalk, so that is, the sidewalk starts on that south side, so it'll be a total of three lots,
oh, okay.
So they'll be able to sell those other two lots for commercial use, after it's done and signed off, that can be sold off as, be ready for a commercial building, all that'll do is apply for a permit after that's done.
So it's be ready, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Lee family subdivision number two, final plat, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so we have a roll call?
Councilmember Hoag.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Chipman.
Yes, that was, sorry.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Heifer.
Yes.
Barbaris.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is for Burt Electric to run power to the Laird property with an estimated cost of $3,838, and Mike, would you like to read?
I brought this here because this was not budgeted for, we did come in with the funding about a year ago, that power is used down there to operate for events, and right now that's mainly the mud bugs, but as of now, there is no power down there because the pole is so bad, and the, the electrical box has went bad on it, that we can't use it, so we did get ahold of, I did get ahold of other electricians, this is the one I got back though for this, to install a new box with services down there, and connect it, was, we're looking at the thirty, $3,838, that does not include a pole, but we do have poles in the pole yard that have been cut down that we can use for this, so it's really not gonna be an overall expense to add the pole to it, I just wanted the council to be aware while we're adding power down there, that the other power has been, it's no longer used or useful, and that, we've been looking at adding a light to it also, so there's some lighting down there to be able to see in there if somebody's going through it, and if we add the pole back there, and it's idle power out there, that's not our power, they would come make the connection and then you pay it, I'm not sure how much a month we feed for a light out there is, but I believe it's about $15 a month after we install all this, but we have to have all this to go further.
So the Laird property is Mortimer's Island?
No, it, well, yeah, east of Mortimer's Island, so you have Mortimer's Island, and you keep going where they do the mud drags and stuff, it's at, there's ten acres down there this area, those two fields, and, and currently, we have no power down there.
Okay.
That's my question.
There, there was power, but it's not available, at this time, it's, it's.
It's not addressed, I don't know.
It doesn't have real address, yeah, so if you keep going past the Mortimer's Island, go straight east from there, you get into the Laird property, which is actually quite large, probably like a little over ten acre.
So it's where the mud bugs are, and then, then east?
It's that whole lot down there.
That whole area in there, okay.
From, from the gate, then all the way south to the river, and then east to the property.
So, south of the slough, south of the slough, east of Mortimer's Island, to the railroad tracks, or the railroad bridge right there, we, we put a dike in there a few years ago to stop the water flow from washing out of near that bridge, the Mortimer's, that's all the city property.
Okay. Give you a tour sometime.
Actually, it's really convenient, they took the Google Earth picture during the last mud drag, what, two or three years ago, they, was it in 2012? If you go back 2012, that Google Earth picture actually- 2012, that Google Earth picture actually was of the mudbugs, so it's a great layout when they present their paperwork. Sounds exactly right now.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion that we approve Burke Electric to run power to the Lair property for an estimate of $3,838.
Sir?
It's been moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Code?
Yes.
Barbaris.
Yes.
Chipman.
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Haver.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And next item is to, uh, put awning on the front so the, uh, city building here, and all that. Natasha?
So, um, we did get an estimate, um, in the amount of $9,878. And this is to replace the, the existing awning that's out here. It is, to redo it the way it is, is that we couldn't even get a bid on it, just because it's so big, and they don't think that the building will support the structure that needs to be put up to then hold the weight of it, especially in the wintertime. So, this is a quote to do two separate awnings. One would be basically where the buildings, there's a natural divide of the building. It would just be to cover the front door, it would, thirty feet.
Thirty feet from where?
And then, city council, um, entrance right here, in an, in an eleven foot. So it would be two separate awnings. It would, um, separate the two entrances to the building. Um, it wouldn't be as much upkeep and damage to the building when these, the weight of something this large pulls on it. So, it is to do two separate smaller awnings, it is not to do the full length of what's already out there.
We would also be taking down the awnings on the side of the building.
Yeah. Kinda clean it up.
And, so what is the design of this awning? I, I ask because I'm part of that design committee, and this is actually one of the things, awnings and design review is, is part of what we're reviewing and trying to put together. And I, is it made of metal? Is it fabric covering? Is it...
That, Mike?
It's aluminum frame covered with fabric that's five feet out, five feet tall, and it's kind of a dome shape.
The dome shape, okay.
Yeah, that, like, a lot of newer buildings have this style. It's the new, updated version, without having to have it engineered.
And you chose your colors?
I think we would go with a solid color.
What solid color?
Maroonish.
Debate.
We say red, Wolverine red.
Maroon is not Wolverine red.
I know.
Literally opted out of that part of this, I got the quote.
Thank you.
Think I'm opting out, too.
But just for note, to replace the one that's out here, it'd have to be fully engineered. It'd have to have pylons going to the ground. And they said just for the fabric, not including in the engineering, would be over twenty five dollars.
So, Mike, when was that last replaced? Do, did you have any record on that?
More than ten years ago.
Yes.
I was gonna say.
It's definitely exceeded its life expectancy. And if you collect this, you pretty much will, it ain't gonna make it another winter. Even if we don't replace it now, it'll have to come down.
Part of it is already starting to come down.
It's, the track is wore out, the bolts holding the building are, while, you know, we've, we've epoxyed and, and re-bolted to the wall several times, and the electric crew's been up, and Dave's been up, and trying to fix that track, and...
Mayor, I would...
Natasha's looked at the thing, I just got the price.
Ladies first.
No, no, 'cause I was gonna make a motion, so you go.
Uh, have we considered, like, metal, aluminum?
We did, and we don't believe that the, the way this building is built, with the front of this being up higher than the roof, I don't know what you call that, honestly. But to bolt to it, you're still gonna have to have pylons going to the ground, and the front of the building, the way it's built, is not gonna hold too much more weight.
Okay.
So, we, we did look at that.
Is there an estimate on how long this new fabric will last?
Uh...
Five-year replacement plan?
I believe it has a ten-year warranty, if I'm not mistaken, on there, but, go back and back, but... Maybe I don't see it on here, but I know that they have, they have a ten-year color guarantee, even.
Would you think the color would last longer than the fabric, or as long as the fabric?
Yeah, the new, the new fabrics have came a long way since we put this one on, so it's, I would imagine it's longer than that.
I think we need to re-cover.
I, I can, I can verify that before we purchase. Do you guys want a stipulation on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion that we approve the purchase of new awning for city hall not to exceed $9,878.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Blackwell.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Code?
Yes.
Haver.
Yes.
Chipman.
Yes.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
You don't want to submit our first?
Aye.
All, come on, we're gonna have to hear from everybody.
Aye.
Aye.